All right, I'd like to call to order the, uh, this meeting of the county commissioners. Uh, we did have a forum here tonight every once a year, so appreciate your attendance. Uh, first item on the agenda is pledge allegiance and dedication. If you will, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and stand, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for, uh, the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. God, we ask for you just to place your hand upon our county. Uh, we have so many people that are hurting and, uh, county employees that have, uh, loss of relatives and those that are sick. We just ask for you to comfort them and just be with them during this time. God, we ask for you to be with us tonight as we contemplate the business of Cleveland County. Help us make wise and just decisions. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Next, we'd like to recognize any elected officials that are here tonight. Any elected officials here? Next item is recognition of the veterans. Any veterans that are here, if you'll please stand up for us tonight? We'd appreciate it, so it'd be great to have you. Thank you for your service. Uh, department heads, would you please, um, stand up and identify yourselves so you can be recognized as well?
Chris Green, Tax Commissioner.
Chris Grant, County Finance Director.
Joe Lord, Cleveland County tonight.
Thank you for being here tonight. First item on the agenda tonight is, uh, the proposal, or the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? The second. You've got the first and the second, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Citizen recognition. Uh, this is time where, um, you can come up and, uh, and state your opinions or address the commissioners. Uh, we have one person listed on the, uh, for citizen recognition tonight. Uh, Mr. Williams, if you'd like to come up.
I'm Mr. Robert Williams, I live in Austin. Some of you may already know, uh, at the Colas School Board meeting, uh, panel their citizen recognition asked of not to join in the lawsuit against the state of North Carolina. But that's not, not, not really what we're here to talk about tonight. I've also filed a free information request with the school system regarding some of the credit card dealings over the past so many years that it's been so controversial. And I've, I've received some information that, uh, that, uh, identified a letter as information had been sent to Shelby Star, but the disc itself was marked Plan PEI Request. So I don't know, I don't know what the deal is there, but, but the information contains some pretty disturbing, uh, statistics from what I saw with that sample. It looked like a half million dollars had been, had been spent on credit card purchases and, uh, about sixty to seventy percent of those charges questionable. And when I say questionable, I mean certain things like massages at the road park in, in Asheville. I think it's gonna be pretty hard to justify how that's, uh, something that should be charged to the, to the county, to the schools, to the taxpayer. Things like accept a, a large number of meals to company club or rabbit. What's the school find a rabbit on a credit card for? I don't know. A hummingbird feeder. Mislandish other things, but if we extrapolate what I, what I think this is total number of charges based on some of the other information they had, it looks like over the years they've spent like five million bucks credit cards. And if you, uh, project sixty to seventy percent objection, uh, objectionable charges, there's a, a big, a big problem there. It looks like it's a lot bigger than, than, than I've ever thought. Anyway, also as part of that package, uh, I received a letter basically stating that, uh, that, uh, the volume of information I had requested would be like five hundred thousand pages. And, and it looked like they misinterpreted what I'd asked for as being every transaction that the school had made for the last seven years. But what I actually asked for was just credit card transactions. We should not be that much, that much. Now, what I'm asking you folks to think about is, this is the issue that needs to be resolved. Cleveland County Commissioners vote to send millions of dollars over the years to the school system. And if there's any ways to that extent out there, it needs to be rooted out. So what I'm asking you to think about is becoming a partner and getting this free information act out, requests out and fulfilled and reviewed properly that this year will be it, once and for all.
I appreciate your comments, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
That was all the person we had sign up tonight. Was there anyone else that, uh, intended to sign up tonight that didn't have the opportunity to, that would like the rest of the commissioners? All right. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for that, I'll turn it over to our manager, Ed Richardson.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Several items for your consideration, first being the four minutes from the December seventeenth, regular reading and the January seventh regular reading. I know you had an opportunity to look over that and certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. Item B, under tax administration, we have the December collection report, and I'm pleased to report that through the month of December, uh, Mr. Chris Green and his staff are reporting seventy-five point zero nine percent collection through the month of December for real property. Uh, Mr. Green is here to answer any questions that you may have. Overall, the vehicle side, uh, through the month of December, we are at seventy-two point two five percent respectively. Next item would be item C, out of Tax Assessor's Office, tax abatements and supplements through December of twenty thirteen. Nothing extra ordinary to report for this month. For members, I would say that we have abatements, uh, for the month of December at one hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars ninety-nine cents. We have supplements, uh, at seventeen thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents. Item D, out of the Sheriff's Office, we have a budget amendment for your consideration tonight in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, that is drug forfeiture federal forfeiture money that our Sheriff's Office has asked that we be allowed to accept budget and the use for that. Sheriff's Office has recently received some new patrol vehicles to run onto the fleet and there are some specs that need to be carried out, painting and marking of these vehicles, and that's what that money would be used for. Uh, that's item D. That concludes consent agenda. Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, sir. Um, Commissioners, you have heard of consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? I move. Thank you, sir. And a second as well. How is that your objective? If you had to decide that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item, agenda, is on our regular agenda, um, is the Bolin Springs Rescue Squad. We're honored to have Joe Lord here tonight to discuss that with us. Thank you, County Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I'm here, um, to give you a quick staff report. I'll put strength fire out on the community of Bolin Springs, especially in the Bolin Springs Rescue. At this point in time, they have dissolved that unit. Uh, we made it pretty much official December thirty-first of twenty thirteen. So with that, they went back into their charter to look and see what was to be taking place with the property and the materials that are there at the rescue squad that are left. And in their charter, it states that they would like to have it turned back over to Cleveland County. So that's what we're here about tonight. So I've got pretty much everything really now for you, what's going on as far as the county's accounting of the building and the property. Um, there's a lot of things that went back and forth as far as the exact amount of, um, cost of that property and what is worth tax-wise, and then the condition of the building, and then whether or not we would be able to utilize that for a facility later on in the future. So with the building and property, are there questions or concerns? And I do have Bolin Springs, the last Bolin Springs Rescue Squad Chief is here tonight, and that's probably all that is. Again, questions, we'd be more than happy to address them, but they got down when we started talking in November, I think it was, uh, they had one board member who was the treasurer and one squad member which was the chief. And that's what was the last, lot of that rescue squad. And they turned off all the utilities and stuff several months ago.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Lord?
Only a question, it gets just common, very sad, it's a little, but, uh, I guess comes along with today's problems with the guy, you know, with the, and volunteers. Any organization out there has helped get volunteers, especially with the training and the certification they need, it makes it that much harder. But we're fortunate that, uh, you know, we've put things in place a few months ago to start covering this area that, that we know laps in service before that particular area and looking at what you've put together for is dead over property and repaired, we're still way ahead in dollars and cents as far as taking property and too with, uh, like, like Joe was talking about with, um, Bolin Springs considering a new facility for their town hall. We have a unit state there, so it's very possible that this might be the type of wall we need to play, do state no animals that the walls might carry us over. I think that, uh, it's gonna be a good thing. If you need a motion to do that, then I will make a motion that we accept property, accept Joe's, and the county management recommendation on how to have it, closing this up.
Joe, we've got a motion on the floor to accept the property. Uh, is there a second?
Not a second.
Got a second. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion about the item?
Any money involved in it, perhaps?
The contract, the contract was that if the, if the, uh, dissolve in the, the rescue squad out there, the county would accept that property and there's no, for us to accept that, there's no money involved on our end.
There, that is true for the property, and that's true for the building. Uh, there's also, um, tangibles inside the building. There's an older ambulance, a hundred and five thousand miles on it. Uh, there are some pieces of equipment and stuff that are inside that building. So those are also gonna be included in this as far as what we're taking in. The prices that I list in here are just estimates because of the, the equipment, I don't know everything about that building, what we could have in the building, inspector out there on the building and stuff. None of this has to be spent a month to fix the building. So currently, it's in that state. I mean, there's some things that we would probably want to do right away, um, to get up short enough to make sure that building is, um, maintained the way it is. Uh, but other than that, nothing would have to be budgeted out of this year's money. If we were looking to put a station there, then we would go through the normal budget process that we normally do, put the money in there for next year, um, to make the place look a little stuff. It does have the asbestos, which is common to an older type structure. It's all over the ceilings and stuff, the way they used to use asbestos in the paint. Came back to about two to three percent. So that cost just to abate that building and get the asbestos out there was roughly estimated around fifteen thousand. So the rest of it is all cosmetics for, um, some of it is generator, a lot of them try to suck the generator, it runs on, um, natural gas, and we need to turn it over and get it pumping out water. So it's been sitting there for a while, most of the stuff hasn't been, so those are the things we'll find later on. But I have a rough estimate if you're already thinking what costs to bring that building up to a standard unit, if we set as a station.
Question B is, one, you're looking at the equipment and you have looked at it in terms that we could use it, and you were willing to pay for the equipment. The second, the building, there could be some liability in it because of some problems, and we're paying for the building. And third, do we actually even need the building to serve EMS?
I'll answer the first one about the equipment. We're not paying anything for that equipment, it's a part of the problem. It's all in that building, it's all being turned over to us. Now, can, can we utilize all the equipment they have in there? Some of it is very old, some of it is very recent. Um, the largest piece of thing in there that most people will be interested in is the purification tool. It's got a cutter in there, a scrubber. Six costs approximately twenty thousand dollar brand new, estimated somewhere around six or seven thousand for use. As far as the cost, if we were to sell it, go die deals or the local, I've got several inquiries from local people like, but very, Bolin Springs, um, Fire Department is very interested in it too. So you could literally sell some of that stuff off, just like we sell ambulances and stuff to the city of Shelby, we could sell some of that stuff. And it's all currently, right now, it's all coming with the building as part of the charter. So all that stuff will be turned over to us. So could some of that offset some of the bounds of what's costing us to maybe fix the place up, most definitely? That answers the first one on equipment, close, or?
Third question was, do we need it?
Okay. The, it's been seven, eight years. We are currently in the town hall at Bolin Springs. Currently at town hall, about four or five years ago, there was a big thing in the paper and everything with it, um, they were trying to remodel the town hall. And Bolin Springs Town decided that then we're not gonna keep that building. They've actually, um, I think they've sold it to Gartner Web, or they're going to sell it to Gartner Web, they want that area. And the problem was, they had a lot of mold and a lot of other problems to breed up. I don't think with the economy the way it is, the towns move very quickly as far as getting a new place to go, but at some point in time, they're gonna have to, uh, because they were not gonna remodel the place that they were currently. Currently housed with the town hall, the police house. So even if they do move, um, we've negotiated and they've gone through a couple of town managers down there since we started negotiations with Blackwood and the deer. So it's been here quite a few, um, years of people looking at and seeing if they're gonna include us into their location. We've done that with some of the other things like the Shelby Fire, we've gone in with their buildings and built with them. Uh, but it would be a costly project for us, no matter which way we did it, whether we go with the town hall or whatever. But the building that we're currently in, uh, we get flooding in there quite often, where the water stuff is seeping in, we've got the mold in our areas and stuff, and we go in and spray and paint, put septic pumps in there and stuff to try to clean it up, but it's not uncommon for them to have water and everything where we're at when we come into the base, especially if it's during the rainy season. So do we need it? Probably at some point in time in our future, yes, we will need a building. Would this make a good example? It's less than a mile, mile and a half from our current location, so it would be a good location. It's got large enough bays, it's a plenty big enough building compared to what we have now, it would be very, very useful for any EMS base.
You know, Joe, we've looked at future different locations for EMS.
Correct.
And I think what I heard would probably either one of these places might work too.
Would it?
Man, I'm adding this red.
You're talking about the Bolin Springs Rescue base?
I'm talking about location of EMS in Bolin Springs to serve the public. Is either one of them worth the effort or the money to maintain or would need to help themselves?
Okay. Um, after I talk to the line captains, we've had all of our supervisors in here this, I've had our maintenance people over there, I've had the building inspector over there, I've had Perry from EM over there. We've done a lot of walkthroughs with the Bolin Springs Rescue Squad. And to everybody that has gone through that place, they feel it's a block building, it's much like the law enforcement center is now. It's a building, it is there, the property is big enough to support us and everything, the building is there. Internally, we'd have to change a few things, do some structure to it, but yes, it would be a suitable building for the size of that station that I have down Bolin Springs. If we were to stay where we're currently at in the old town hall, I think we're gonna be running into some mismatch at some point in time, because if I remember right, went through several years of this, Gartner Web wants that property, and the town hall is definitely moving out and building another structure whenever the economy is better. So we may be left homeless if we didn't have something. Now, your question is, do we want a new station? I don't know. New is always good, but I don't know if that's really necessary for Bolin Springs if we take a building like this and just go ahead and refurbish it from the ground up, starting with that it costs us zero to start with. I may put, like I said, in here, we may put up the fifty thousand dollars to get it all repaired back up, but that's a building, I paid almost a half a million dollars for one of the ones that came out.
Can I make a comment? Okay, if you're looking at the current tax value of the property itself, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars just from the value, okay, we've got sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment, we're looking at a forty-five thousand dollar repair bill. That leaves us to the good by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And like, uh, Joe said, the current building that we built for the Bay Station, King Mountain, almost a half a million dollars. Now we've got a suitable location, something, somewhere with what we've got in Wakefield, correct?
Correct.
That we went ahead and took an old building and redid it to provide service because we don't need, we won't have the number of calls out there that we have in King Mountain area due to the hospital location, but, you know, if you did look at dollars and cents, even the hospital, no, no, just looking at the dollars and cents, portion of it, their charter, we take the building, we take the building, we've got a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar tax value building, even if we don't spend the forty-five, we spend the forty-five and not agree it, then it will be useful to us. So I, I think what Joe's saying, that, that looking at the future of what we need up there, I mean, it closed what seventy years ago, one now, I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and accept the building and start looking and let the county manager work on something for that year, but to make improvement, to move the unit in it, that we'll have plenty of time between now and any time.
I have no problem with that, I'm just not probably two, two years down the road that one new building, and got a location.
No, I don't, I don't think that's my habit.
Commissioner, okay, I, I think the location is better be very, very good where it's located now, I don't think the location will be a problem. We've done the M for this, everything.
Well, I think this is all really a discussion, good questions, uh, really good questions on this as well. Um, I guess where we're at right now is we've got a first and a second. Are there any other discussions? One thing that I would, I would want the, uh, the public to take away from this is that there is not, this discussion, I don't want to concern anyone as far as their coverage or the EMS, um, availability in that area. Uh, we've currently been, been taking care of that area from, from Cleveland County with the help of Bolin Springs. Uh, Chief Paul Maxx, we want to, we want to hope to thank you for your service, uh, as well. You've done a great job out there, so, in a, in a tough situation. So we understand that economics are involved with EMS stations and rescue squads now, so... But this is one thing that's not gonna negatively impact the service for our residents that live in the Bolin Springs area. Is that correct?
That's very correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I, I think that, uh, just to say that tonight, that's what we're doing, we're just gonna swear to take a look and say that, and we take it then, it's up to us to play on the side, give a couple, so if, if not, we could...
Or it works up?
Yeah, oh, we could tear it down, just sell the property or whatever, but I think, and I've visited the Bolin Springs facility now, and they do need an upgrade battle, they've been a lot of weeks in big situations, so that's something that will come in by the side.
Only the one thing to add, for members, uh, I did speak with Bolin Springs Town Manager today to make him aware of this item coming before us tonight in case he wanted to be here, staff courtesy to the Bolin Springs community. He did share with me that they're hopeful that they're gonna break ground on the new town hall later this spring, estimates a build out of about eighteen months, probably looking at the end of twenty fifteen. So I think the county's very fortunate, uh, if you vote tonight for us to accept this property, Mr. Lord can immediately make sure that the property as it is today is secure, we can go ahead and, and continue with preliminary discussions with the town to track the build out of their new town hall. And, uh, the town manager, Bolin Springs, suggested today that we also, uh, include in those discussions, Gartner Web University, because they're a key partner in that community. We can hold this piece of property as viable option to keep the commissioners up today as this, uh, continues to move earlier than next year. Very good discussion. Anything else? All right, we have a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Lord. Next item on the agenda is City of Shelby Property Swap. That will turn it over to our county manager.
Mr. Chair, thank you. In the staff report, I have any documents that are also enclosed with that. What we have is a formal request from the City of Shelby, uh, where they are asking for consideration of a property swap. Five parcels that I'd like to go over you briefly and then certainly answer any questions that you may have. The first three parcels included in the City of Shelby's letter several weeks back are three residential properties, all located in the City of Shelby. These three parcels are all relocated in areas where there have been continued challenges with higher than normal crime for the city. A lot of the homes that are in these areas, uh, there have been minimum housing code compliance issues, and these three pieces of residential property that, uh, that Cleveland County owns currently, uh, the three, uh, according to our Tax Assessor's Off, Office, resale value would be around fourteen thousand dollars. The size of the residential tracts are nine one-hundredths of an acre, eighteen one-hundredths of an acre, and eleven one-hundredths of an acre. And these are three modest residential homes. In speaking with Tax Assessor's Office, they were very supportive of these parcels being handed over to the City of Shelby. Uh, the City of Shelby does have an active minimum housing code, uh, office working closely with other city departments, and they would, uh, work closely with property owners to try to pull these properties into compliance. The two remaining parcels that I will talk to you about tonight are really the two pieces that would be swapped from the city over to the county. The city is asking for a five-point-one acre tract of property that would be adjacent, uh, that Cleveland County owns, that is adjacent to the West Water Tank near KSM Castings, uh, located on the west side of Shelby. This property, uh, while it is at five-point-one acres, in looking and examining the piece of property, about three of the five acres is within the railway. And so there's only about two acres that are not, that are not, that's not within the railway right of way. And so say it's a five-acre piece of property, it's a little bit of a misnomer, and it is adjacent to the water tank. I think the city's interest is to have, uh, all property right around the water tank so that the city is assured in the future that they will be able to control access to the water tank, access to the property adjacent to it, to, to assure that there is continued security in and around the water tank, and this, uh, tank serves KSM and is a key piece of continued success with economic development in that area. In exchange for this piece of property, what the city is offering the county is three-quarters of an acre here in town that is strategically located across the street from our board elections office. Uh, I think what Kerry has up in front of you right now is the, is the five-acre parcel that's located, uh, out near KSM. And, um, you can certainly answer any questions you may have on that. And, and the piece of property in town, the three-quarters acre of, uh, land, vacant land, is strategically located across from our board elections office, and currently this property is used for overflow parking during especially heavy voter turnout times at the board elections. And so the city would be willing to formally be that property over to Cleveland County. Kerry Melton in our office has been working very closely with DOT to make sure that we would be able to, over time, get, uh, a pedestrian...
would be able to, over time, get a pedestrian mid-block crossing from that current vacant piece of property over to board elections, where we can get folks coming in to vote safely across that street. We have gotten positive feedback from the DOT that that can happen, so I think we can bring that piece of property online in a formal way, ensuring that people can get to our board elections safely. So basically, that would help to serve us with our voter parking needs. I think the, the property swap back to the city would also help their needs as it relates to their management of their water tank and their water infrastructure in that area of the city. And with that, members of the board, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions on the City of Shelby Property Swap for County Manager? I'd like to approve in a second, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Bethlehem and Oak Grove Rural Fire Relief Fund. They have, these two departments have submitted names for us to appoint to their environments relief fund for their respective agencies. Jeff Cloninger for Bethlehem, Momma Sisum for Oak Grove, and my understanding on this is the, the fire relief fund is for firefighters that are injured in line of duty, is that correct?
Actually, the purpose of this board is to take control of, it's actually funds, they're one-half, one percent of the fire and lighting insurance premiums collected in a rated fire district. This board decides what to do with that money. And the two members, there's not a term expiration on this, but as the, the departments were filling out their updated forms, they realized that some of the folks serving on them had passed away, so that's, that's why I brought them in.
Mr. Chairman, the comment is, both, I hope both individuals, and they have both worked their departments in a very outstanding manner over all the years, they couldn't ask too many.
Any other comments?
I think we should accept those two.
Got a motion to accept?
Charles, second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, we're down to commissioners' reports. Commissioner Holbrook, we'll start with you tonight?
Well, I guess.
Okay.
I'd just like to say one thing, harsh report, plus the rest I can cover all of the reports. I think, I don't know whether it's been released publicly, I don't think it has, but President Paul Murphy declared Community College was selected as the outstanding president of the community college system, which is fifty-eight community colleges across the state, and he was received that honor, it's quite an honor, and it comes with very stiff competition, and I guess a tribute to everybody that contributes at the community college level in so many different ways to make that program and that college go. I think the thing which trustees are probably acknowledging is, there were probably a lot of people competing for that, and it was probably right once a level playing field until a twenty-three billion dollar grant was awarded. That sort of closed the deal a little bit, so we're very happy for Steve, though he deserves it. More than anything, he deserves it, it's his great honor for the college and the community too.
Commissioner Holbrook, I was wondering if you'd like to do a, a, a?
Yeah, the commissioner reminded me that we have a carpenter class at the, at the college as part of the curriculum, and last trustee meeting came, talked of a discussion, anybody needs a doghouse, that's a good place to pop.
What they do with the doghouse, they take, you cut the angle, and they're just like a big hound, and then they've got a bunch of them, so they put them on Google.com to sell them, and I think they're going for about twenty bucks a piece, that's what they call them, so, get you a good dog out of this whole world.
Anything else?
Uh, I've had more help, I've had more help meeting, and also the council day meeting today, just following routines is, I think wanting to go, you know, the grants should get cut back, funding is not as much, so everybody was, for more money, got the, our MPO meeting tomorrow.
The Boys and Girls Club's gonna have an announcement of, if you call, a few months ago, there was a new RX card, Coast to Coast RX card, on the twenty-ninth, at eleven o'clock over at the Turning Point Academy in the gymnasium. And it's a card that they're promoting, it's a discount card, a drug card, that's gonna be free to the community, and it's gonna, it's not only for drugs, for, that you get, well, it's drug for the pharmacy, but it's, but it's also for veterinarian services, for eyes, dental, what else is on there, vision, and so it's, you'll be getting more information, but they, you can pick up the cards through the, at the pharmacies, there'll be, we'll have some in the county office buildings, so there'll be more information to come, but it's gonna be announced on the twenty-ninth at eleven o'clock at the Turning Point Academy if you'd like to come. So just be looking for more information for that.
Chairman, what I was gonna say is that I would like to kind of, in order of all three, is a resolution honor, not a former, for his, I think it's recognition, if that's what you could, take advice out there, but I would say, we can expect him coming here.
That'd be good. I'd be good to hear you say it was all the dogs.
That must be like.
I think we could do a resolution of some type, that we honor him for his, a lot of people are gonna realize, he has recognized, Eddie could speak better than I can, but he's recognized not only across state, but county, but across several states, and some of his accreditation activities for his ability. And I'm sure that it's not, we make sure that there is not a lack of information. You could, you could, you could. Eddie, you don't think that, and I said that. And the only other thing I have is, I've actually spent enjoyable four days for an anniversary and a birthday, and the first time that I can remember, recently, I cut my phone off, and I didn't talk to him. That was the most painful.
That's right.
Happy anniversary?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty, well, the whole week, the whole week was kind of strange, it was forty years at the funeral home, thirty-nine anniversary, and sixty-two.
Did you want the same tears?
I'm sorry.
Did you want the same tears?
She's already been there.
So why you cut your phone off?
No, Kerry and April and Bill, they did this.
But Jerry, I've got one other comment, I don't like her, usually just stands up in her dress, she's gone, it's very appropriate.
Yes, a news trip for us.
All right, do you have anything to this side? I'd like to mention a couple, a quick names I was reminded by Commissioner Holbrook. We have had a, a lot going on over the last several weeks, the last, since we've been at last, and we have got to be credit to S N C Cleveland County and to all the work they did, the detail work they did for the scrubs event, Earl Scrubs event at the grand opening there, it was, they looked tremendous amount of work into it. And we, we have been receiving, I think, receiving some emails that show, we have received recognition nationally from a lot of different papers, so, of course, most on that list, there was a lot of entries from the Shelby Star, they had, they did a lot of coverage and great coverage for that as well. One other thing I'd, I'd like to mention too is, I want to publicly thank our county manager, Aunt Kerry Melton, for the work that y'all have done on the summary page for our agendas. It's the, we talked about details with DCC, that is one detail that y'all have added on to our agenda, that is gonna make it not only easier for us to follow along with what we've got going on, but for the public as well, on what our agenda's put out there. That summary page is one of the things that's on there, it's gonna go through a lot more details and, and reasoning behind some of the things that are gonna be brought for the commissioners, so, I appreciate all that work, and I hope that you've got the department heads working on that as well to, to help put that together, so. Thank y'all for doing that.
Mr. Chairman, also thank, we've got a new editor too.
Yeah.
Correct.
Something like that.
Talk about it a little bit, so we'll put it in the paper.
Huh?
Want to talk about it, so we can put it in the paper?
Can you write a story about it?
I saw the story about that, but for the ones of you that didn't get to see the video of Ben, or, what is it called? I'm blanking, it was.
Um, Le Broni.
Le Broni.
Yeah.
You need to see it. It was unreal, it's, I just, I can't explain it to you. That's something that we, maybe we can get that, and we can share it with the commissioners somehow, so, I'll probably get that for some.
It may not, it'll be talked about.
I will, I will.
All right. There's no other business, all of the same motions, adjourned?
The recess.
Resess.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
I think motion to recess will be convened June, two, January twenty-eighth, at four, what time is it?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, forward session.
Got a first and a second, that, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you very much.